Go ahead and call our meeting to order. If you'd please join me in a moment of silent prayer for reflection. Thank you. Here, if you do roll call, please.
Kathy Cox. Ellen Ward.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Pat Rooney.
Here.
Nicole Cohen.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we, let's see. Do we have any calls to the, oh wait, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to go into, a motion to remove item 4.1.3 from the consent agenda? Okay. Same call for executive session right here at the top.
We should.
You can do that anywhere in the meeting.
Are there any other calls to public?
No, there are not.
Okay. All right, then we will go ahead and move into recognition of visitors. Mr. Gardner is going to do a presentation. Okay?
President, good evening, word, good evening. I'd like to just do a presentation on the newly revised standards and where our district is with regards to implementing those standards. So, as I go through the process with you, if you'd like to ask questions or have me clarify anything, please feel free to ask. So, part one of the standard review process, Governor Ducey, he made a call that he would like to see the standards reviewed. He wanted that to be reviewed by Arizona teachers and the public in general. So, he set that process going forward. The math standards and English language arts standards were also reviewed at this time so that they officially become, became the Arizona standards. So, that meeting started again April 27 when that was announced. As a result of that, the Arizona State Board of Education oversees the adoption of the standards and gives the final approval. They set up some committees to go through this process of review. Superintendent Diana Douglas then began a statewide tour to get public feedback on the standards and those, that feedback was collected and reviewed as well. So, the state board was organized with that in mind to have these standards revised. They put together a standards development committee that consisted of 17 appointed members. That committee then appointed the English language arts standards subcommittee and also the mathematics standards subcommittee. And those people were involved in the review process. They were given information, feedback from people that wanted to be a part of the process. These were teachers, experts in the areas of English language arts and mathematics. And they looked at all of the public comments, they looked at each standard, they made their suggestions. And those were sent back up for the state board and then they had public meetings to get input on where we were in that process. So, transparency was the key. It really was an Arizona effort to try to target what standard we really want to believe and support. Those decisions were made through that formal process. So, the working groups were comprised of Arizona educators, charter schools are also involved, public schools, and post-secondary institutes. ASU, U Bay, NYU, etc. So, you had over 200 educators participated. Six Arizona school districts were represented. There were actually 9,000 public comments and you can see those, if you have access, if you'd like to see those comments. And they all received feedback on the vision of the Department of Education and some of those committees.
Brad, how come, how come all the counties didn't participate?
You know, I'm not sure on that. I'm not sure why. This is the information I received when we participated.
What kind of why?
They came to La Paz, they didn't come to Mojave, but they were in La Paz.
Yeah, they were in Park. Tour.
And we, and Carol was there.
I mean, it's a volunteer, so no one volunteers from the county. And they try to get people from the different counties. No one wants to come.
Well, they only have some people, so.
Right.
They probably pick some rural areas.
Okay, so the initial draft of the ELA standards, they were reviewed by independent expert reviewers. Those people are listed there. You have a couple on the bottom that looked at developmentally appropriate, the appropriateness of the standards. And if they thought that some were not appropriate developmentally, then they made those suggestions and their committees took those under consideration. So, they were officially adopted on December 19, 2016, final approval. There is now a two-year period of implementation, so this year is where we're looking at the standards. We're trying to identify our resources, our needs, professional development for teachers, asking them to really look at the standards and understand what those actually mean. And then 28 through 2019, we're expected to fully implement all of the standards in math and English language arts. Arizona Merit, which is our state test, it will be aligned to those new standards, starting in the spring of 2019, that exam. The blueprints for ELA and math at Arizona Merit are already in the works, so they're aligned. And the test will align with that as well. There is a summary of changes document that's available now, online. And it's also the same for mathematics. So, for public understanding, you can, we do have access to these things. Trainings have been available on the ELA standards. I've actually hosted a K-3 meeting with all of K-3 staff to look at the new newly revised standards and the emphasis on K-3 with regards to phonics, handwriting, spelling. So, we've had those meetings and already starting to look at our resources and what we need to do to improve in that area or where we are. So, the structure of the standards, they're now called the Arizona English Language Arts Standards or the Arizona Mathematics Standards because they truly are Arizona standards. So, focusing on just the ELA standards right now, when you go look at those documents, they have these three items basically that are important. They have a new introduction, and I'll show you an example of this. There's a brief, great little summary at the beginning, and that's helpful for both teachers and parents. So, they can just briefly look at that summary and know what's expected. And then there's standards for each grade level and a glossary that assists with some of the terminology. So, here's an example of what I'm referring to. Kind of hard to read, but we have a front page summary of all of the standards. And then a list and bullets of things that are really important for educators to focus on. And that goes across to each grade. The structure of the standards can remain the same. That was a request from teachers in Arizona and districts because we wanted to maintain the same code and language, so it's consistent. They changed the code or the language, that would cause a lot of upheaval in the systems and a lot of man hour work. Work that would take to address those things, so they kept both the same. So, we basically have clusters that focus on reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And then you have what are called anchor standards. And each of those anchor standards then goes by grade level to a specific standard that goes back to that anchor standard. The grade level standards are specific to that grade level and then they move in progression from one grade level to another. Apologies again for not being able to read that. So, that's pretty much stayed the same. The coding also stayed the same, which is a grade pool, because that's a lot of work we've had to revise these. So, again, it looks at year five, RL3, which is in the bottom of the slide, have references fifth grade. It's always by, first letter is always a grade level. And you're looking at an anchor standard or a cluster in this case, RL. And then the grade level is three. Excuse me, the standard is three, sorry. Then let's quote, stayed the same for math as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
Before you pass on from that. Because I heard some rumblings about people being upset that this coding wasn't changed. Can you tell me what would have happened in our district if the coding had changed?
Well, if the coding changed, you're looking at some districts that are digital, so they would have to put back in and change the codes to make sure that they are aligned to the actual standard. That would have taken a tremendous amount of manpower to do that. Our math also have the codes, so we would have to come in and change those. And then that's going to.
So, it would have been redoing the curriculum mapping?
Yeah, the codes in general. Make sure that they were aligned where they fit. And then having the people to learn a new code when you're used to this one. So, consistency, I would like to see what that happens. Okay, big emphasis on the standards that were adopted previously and these newly revised ones. In the past, there was emphasis on informational literary text. And there was a balance throughout the day, students were expected to be exposed to 50% literary text and again about 50% informational. And these were divvied up, if you will, across the day by content areas. So, what they've done in the newly revised, they removed the percentages that you're expected to be, to have students exposed to these. So, that's no longer set in stone. But there's still nine standards for reading, ten standards for reading informational text. And so, the implication is there has to be a balance throughout the day on the focus on those different types of texts. And who's responsible for that, that's another conversation. So, in the past, we had history, science, and technical subjects. They were actually, the standards were identified, those content area teachers were expected to teach reading, writing, speaking, and listening in their classes. And they had their own set of standards to address those. Those have now been removed. It's only now ELA standards. Those science teachers, history teachers, et cetera, they're still expected to teach reading and writing in their classrooms. So, they're going to have to become familiar with the ELA standards. That's a big change. And then text complexity, that's where our rigor, the emphasis on rigor and the increase in complexity over time, the amount of text students are exposed to. Again, that goes back to an expectation. The idea is that students will read proficiently and read independently various types of literature. And then the idea of teachers will be able to make the decisions on what type of text to use based on these qualitative and quantitative measures. And again, that's where we have to make sure everybody understands what that looks like. So, text complexity is a critical component of our ELA standards. And again, that impacts our science teachers, our social studies teachers, taking our technical subject teachers. And we need to know what that looks like. And there is a glossary with the standards. So, this is an area that teachers can review, what this actually looks like for qualitative and quantitative measures to help again the reader in the task, which is another element of that text complexity pyramid. So, they have access to this. And then as they're making decisions in the classroom, you base that on the needs that their students can really are. But then the idea is they continue to try to increase the complexity of the text. Another thing that was very important to the public is many of the standards have references to specific works. And that caused some confusion because then with the reference, it was assumed that that's what you were supposed to teach. So, those references have been removed. So, you'll notice on the 2010 standard, analyze how an author draws on and transforms source material in a specific work. And then the example was how Shakespeare treats a theme or topic from Ode to the Bible or how a lead author draws on a play by Shakespeare. In the new standard, there's no references. The idea is they want to have as much local control as possible, so those decisions are made at the elementary level. So, that goes back to all of those standards that had a reference to a specific author or work, those no longer have those references. I think the greatest change occurred at the K-5 level. Emphasis is on your foundational skills for both reading and writing. And that involves phonics. Again, we have a very strong phonics program that is research validated, research-based. It's called discovery intensive phonics. We use it across our district. We look at that program and we're looking at the needs there, whether we need to replace kids or update things, train teachers, et cetera. Because this is emphasized, again, six syllable types. I'm not an expert at that level, I just know that there's open and closed syllables, your silent E. You're looking at teen vowels, I believe. Let me out here.
Lungs.
Yes, lungs.
So, I don't know if you want to update, if you go ahead.
One of the things that's important in the new changes to the K-5 area is the foundational skills. And they put emphasis on handwriting and writing skills in general. So, we teach handwriting, persive, we start that at the third grade. It's introduced potentially at the end of second grade, that's an option for teachers with the novelty of students. But third grade is where we emphasize persive writing. It's now expected to happen in the third, fourth, and fifth grade. There are reasons behind why we believe in this as well, handwriting and persive especially. But again, that goes back to are our teachers able to present that information before it could, because they've never been expected to. We have a system in place, we have to look at those things as well. The other thing is the importance of phonics. Thought this was kind of funny, hopefully you'll laugh. So, a five-year-old student was learning to read, he then pointed a picture in a zoo book and said, "Look at this, it's a frickin' elephant." I took a deep breath and asked, "What did you call it?" "It's a frickin' elephant." It says so on the picture, and so it does. That frickin' elephant. So, again, the importance of phonics. And that's emphasized in our K-3 grade. It goes back to the writing foundational skills. You have both supporting and writing foundational skills. So, they, you need an emphasis to connect the two, so they're not taught in isolation. There's relevancy for both and application of both at the same time. So, you'll notice on the writing foundational skills, a lot of the phonics and the six syllable items are listed there. And then you've got on the other side with decoding. So, as the text increases in complexity, you want students who are going to be looking at anything with words to have the skill to break those words apart, which is going to help with their reading skills. And again, the key here, in my opinion, is handwriting skills and persive writing. If you're going to have success with kids, you have to have the foundational skills addressed early. Get to where it's automatic or automat化 occurs. And a little fun thing to attempt here, if you want to take a second, if you have something to write on, just a little test for you to see how important this is. So, I'll give you 30 seconds, I'd like you to write the alphabet. Ready, 30 seconds.
In cursive?
In cursive, yes. Ready?
Lower, purple.
I don't care. Ready? Go. Hopefully, people remember how to write in cursive.
He just did the whole thing.
Okay, stop. Now, hopefully, some of you completed the task fairly simple. Now, here's the key, I'd like you to do the same thing, except I want you to use your left hand. Try it with me. 30 seconds, same deal. Alphabet, left hand, ready, go.
Will I even teach you the beautiful pencil correctly, please?
That's a mess.
Now, I'm hoping that there was not, there was a significant decrease in the second effort. And the reason why I brought this up to your attention is that we have some kids that, if they're still struggling with just forming a basic letter or trying to sound out a word, it gets very frustrating for them. And a lot of times when they're asked to do things that they're just not capable of, they're not able to focus on the bigger part of the process because they're so, they're spending so much energy and time trying to focus on just the little things they need to accomplish. At least a frustration, they get shut down. That's why it's so important that K-5, the newly revised standards, that we really focus on those skills. And we give them time to develop those skills as they grow. So, it's important. All right, the mathematics standards. Again, there was not significant changes in the standards. There's some wording and some new standards that were added, but pretty much most of the standards stayed the same. There were some minor changes. Decoding again remained the same, A8. If you see a standard, it's a new standard, it will include a lowercase letter. That's how you know it. High school, they replaced A1 with Algebra 1, G with Geometry. The P+ is for anything like calculus or an advanced math class. And then you have a document, and I'm going to go through this document with English language arts focus so you can actually see what this looks like from an educator's perspective, student or parent's. So, you can see how to navigate the documents. But these documents are available. So, this is an example of the first grade, the revisions and the planning guidance that were involved in mathematics. And this goes all the way through grade 12. So, when you're looking at a document that's available now, you'll see this. You see any additions or deletions to that content area by grade level. You'll notice there were no deletions to the original standards, pretty much. There were some wording changes, clarifications, and then there were some tables added to first to second grade. The key emphasis has been fluency throughout all of the documents with math and what this fluency actually looked like. So, we have had those conversations with our math teachers and we will continue those throughout this year.
And what does fluency look like, instant?
Yeah, pretty much if you want to be automatic, you know, if you're at the elementary level, multiplication, division, those things should be automatic. We put emphasis on those. We have several programs we utilize to try to help kids improve their accuracy and their fluency in those areas. So, it's okay. And then this is the summary of change document, like that was mentioned earlier in my presentation. So, you're going to, I'm going to break this down for you so you see each part and what it actually means. And this again is the ELA standard document. So, it starts out with definitions, talks to the reader about what the standards are, what curriculum means, what is instruction. The changes in K-12, additional deletions and moves, et cetera. So, I'll just walk you through them. So, again, standards, we all realize that's what you're supposed to know and be able to do. That's the standard part. They build across grade level and when they aggressively increase, you're sophisticated over time. So, by the time the student gets to 12th grade, we're supposed to be college career ready. We're able to go into a field of their choice. So, that's what they're supposed to be able to do and know. Curriculum, the resources, and we're looking at all of our resources right now. I know Diana's mentioned that the board would like to see a curriculum committee and council organizing in the near future. We're starting looking at this process. So, we'll be looking at that. So, curriculum, that's the how we do things and also our instruction. How are teachers going to teach these? That's again, local control. We don't tell teachers how to do specific things, but we give them the resources to learn. It's their professional judgment, they'll do their best. Those are the overarching changes. And I've gone through those with you, so in general, that's on that document, or listed in the note. There were any additions or deletions or moves, those are listed. And then those are on those documents that are available to the public and teachers, et cetera. And I'll confuse those with future. And the diameter of changes, how the 2010 standards and the 2016 standards look, are they different, the same? It was about available to people in general. And then the areas of emphasis, gone through those with you with ELA, and then mathematics and fluency and mathematical practices by grade level. These are the available resources, we've been on the link. I've shared a lot of this with our teachers across the district and our principals, we've had meetings about this. And then we're in the process of reviewing our resources right now. And then in math, what we're trying to do, again, you have the same thing, overview of changes to the math standards. That document is available. The board was gracious enough to adopt the Crane curriculum, the digital curriculum, which is a resource for our teachers. As the newly revised standard is already built into it. Considering bringing Tara Guerrero, she's the math specialist that organized the Crane digital curriculum. She's a consultant AB as well. Considering bringing her over here in the second semester to visit with our middle school and our elementary teachers. That document, if people are using it from home. And then I'm producing a family newsletter in January that will go out with information for parents to understand. Here's the new expectations, here's something you can start to make for your child, and how we're supporting parents as well.
I like standards, but in the word standard, I think it's important that we look at, is it our highest goal as a standard? Is it the middle of the road or is it the bare minimum?
For being a standard is just a target across the board, it doesn't mean that you can't go above it.
Okay.
It's just, it's a minimum expectation, I would say. And it's one that we can agree on, and that has happened publicly with the open meetings about the standards. But that doesn't limit what a teacher can do with that standard. Certainly, you can go above that standard.
And how, and how are we as a district, when our approach that, and are we going to gauge ourselves to simply meet the standard here? Or is our goal to work to produce people on a regular basis that exceed that standard?
Well, I personally believe that we should offer a world-class education. So, if you're going to have a world-class education, you're going to have to go above those standards. That's just, that should be an expectation. That goes back to professionalism. You're in the classroom, are you putting in the effort to learn about the standards and then look at the resources that a teacher can utilize to help address that standard for those students? I think that's good.
So, it's my understanding that these standards are the minimum. And they're designed to be college and career ready, which I think is kind of, well, I was told that that's impossible to be both. But it's my understanding that our universities have now lowered the standards for admitting people into universities in order to increase their enrollment within these standards. And that it's, if you pass the AZ Merit test, and I have the old park contract where it actually stated that. I don't have the AZ Merit contract in front of me. But that if you pass the AZ Merit, that it would allow you to be admitted into a university with credit-bearing courses, meaning no remedial courses. Is this your understanding?
I'm not familiar with the university requirements right now with regards to AZ Merit. I will look into that. I know ACT is emphasized, SAT is still emphasized, that dictates scholarship opportunities for students.
So, when students apply, they're still having, my mom, like, asked me as a mom, my child just took the test. She had to take the math test to be enrolled into the math course that she needed to be in. So, it might not be a remedial class, but you might not get into the math class.
That you want.
You need.
But you're going to get credit. But you're gonna get credit.
But you're direct, you're getting credit.
Credit bearing.
Credit bearing versus remedial. But they're still going in having to take math and ELA tests in some cases to put them into a math course based on how difficult the math is for their major.
So it's the difference between a four-year plan and a five-year?
Four or six-year plan.
Right.
Seems to be getting longer and longer.
Yeah, and you're dealing with the issue of student debt, which is tremendously unfair to kids who are bearing and their parents.
I've got a couple of ground floor questions, just for myself, bring myself up to speed. The state of Arizona worked with textbook manufacturers. The reason I'm asking that is, in Texas, when you bought, got a textbook, it had all your standards in the back of the textbook and it referenced the point in the textbook where that standard was meant. Does Arizona do that?
No.
The other question I had is, I was looking at what it was saying here, and then I heard you say the teacher asked it. We do establish standard texts across classrooms, don't we?
Well, um, that has, that, that's been up in the air because, one, funding, we are limiting our resources. But what we've tried to do is when we've had these standards presented, we've tried to adopt a textbook that will align to the standard to assist teachers as a resource. But I haven't tried to bring to the board an adoption of a textbook in the last four or five years because right now I don't know about the quality. And then you have these costs that are enormous on these textbooks. And I think there's other ways to address the standard than just going out and spending money on a textbook that might not actually address the standard.
Now, I'm worried about, is I'm worried about a standard. I'm worried about three teachers teaching the same subject and they're all teaching it differently. That, you know, do we have a coordination issue here or?
Um, yeah, I, right now we do because there's so many resources available and, um, that, that is a challenge. When a teacher closes the door, what resource are they going to tap into to teach that standard? Some districts have a specific system set up and you will follow it, it's almost scripted if we're not there. I don't want to go there.
I don't want to see that. I don't want to see that. I want teachers to have some, some flexibility in the classroom. But I think there's certain standards, and I can remember very well some teachers saying to me, and I didn't teach English, but saying to me, they hated it when they had to teach Shakespeare, but they had to teach Shakespeare in that school. They didn't have a choice. I mean, there were certain things they had to teach. And that's what I'm worried about is are we getting flexible to the point that some of these issues may not be covered?
Right now, we're, we're having those conversations and discussions with our administrative team members. Cause I know the idea is consistency. So if I transfer from Novellus to Smoke Tree, it would be, the idea would be that I'm not going to miss something that I should have received at Smoke Tree when I transferred to Novellus. I should be getting the same level of instruction at this, on the same topic. I don't know if that's happening right now because of the, just the lack of resources. We actually have too many resources.
I was gonna say, I think we have a lot of resources.
Yeah.
Because I think teachers use a lot of resources. They, they go out on that net to get.
Yes.
A lot of resources. So I think that's probably just as big of a problem as.
It is.
Not having enough actual books.
Yes, I agree.
Or.
Well, one causes the.
Right.
It does. That's, that's one. We're in a perfect storm right now. We're gonna try to streamline things and we want, you know, this to be open and have those discussions and bring people to the table to make those types of decisions. But if that is critical, there needs to be a system in place that says, I'm getting this, and when I go there, I should be getting the same thing.
Wouldn't a lot of that be accomplished with articulation so that, like, I'm just saying at the high school, if you have three teachers teaching US history, that within that department, they're getting together and they're saying, look, these should be the outcomes, this is what. And, and that's the thing, is when you start looking at standards, even though this is a minimum standard, I would think that real good schools, real good teachers, what they're gonna do is, they're gonna, their whole idea is, hey, that's just sort of a, that's the minimum, but we're gonna get these kids beyond this so that when they start doing things, you know, applying for schools or whatever, they're walking in there highly prepared. But, you know, the hard thing is, like, when I came out of school and you go into a public school, you don't realize that you're dealing with a wide variety of kids. And if you walk in there and your whole thing is, I'm gonna teach them with the idea that they're all college bound and they're gonna do that, you're, you're overlooking a whole group of kids, that, that's not where they're going. They don't want to go there. You're gonna offer them that. But I think real good teachers and departments, they're gonna tie a lot of that together and their idea is to just produce people that are going, that are gonna do real well. And that feedback comes back when they go to the universities and all that. And I know a number of years ago, our freshman class that went up to NAU, we got recognition from NAU, I think it was three years in a row. This is when I was the assistant principal, where they were the highest performing group of kids out of a school that size. And so, you know, the idea is just to produce the best that you can. And so much of that is driven by the quality of teacher that's in there and the departments getting together, or the classes getting together and saying, when they leave here, we want to know that we've done a good job.
I think the thing that worries me though, is I tend to look at things on the broad picture, the long range. And the thing that worries me is we may have three of the absolute best English or math teachers in the world. They're working within their department, they're coordinating all their efforts. Yea, we're wonderful. But one or two of them retire or leave, and now where are we? Are we still maintaining that consistency? Have we established specific, if we're not gonna use text, have we established specific reading issues? Do we have something that maintains that continuity?
If I can, I'm in the math department at the high school, and we have common assessments for every unit. And there's five of us that teach geometry together. We give those assessments at the end of the unit. We meet, we revise, we look at how students do, we re-tweak whatever we want on the assessment itself. But if you went into our shared drive at the high school, we have all of the lessons, we have the assignments, we have the resources, we have what comes from the text, we have everything listed out. Now we continually make adjustments and, you know, change or update that year to year, but we get new staff almost every year within my department. And they're able to go on and just look within it. And I would say probably on the English side, they're more organized than the math department in some grade levels. But I would say that we are definitely consistently teaching the standards and.
But you have, you had your assessments and things documented, right? So that they carry on year after year. That's what I'm getting at. Do we have documentation that says, this is what's expected, you know? And it's very easy to have a very, very effective department that passes things word of mouth. And then when it falls apart, it falls apart completely.
Everything's electronic. It's all there.
And if I may, we, um, a couple of things that you addressed. First of all, with textbooks, textbooks were adopted a very long time ago here. That's one of the areas that we have noted in terms of our curriculum committees. The textbooks were adopted prior to obviously even the Common Core standards being published, which was probably about eight years ago. If I'm, if I'm thinking, remembering correctly, it was about eight years ago that the Common Core were published, which is, is to a degree not as much of an issue in language arts as it might be in mathematics if the mathematics in certain texts was no longer being taught and vice versa. In each of our schools, we do have a, a, a language arts adoption and a mathematics adoption. But the supplemental materials that go with those may not be aligned to our current standards in terms of providing resources for teachers. But if you're, and I'm, I'm making this up because I don't know, but if the ninth grade textbook contains Julius Caesar, it's very likely that all the ninth grade teachers are using that. There's also an adopted supplemental set of books that are used for the high schools, and they do a lot of planning across the grade levels so that you're not gonna repeat a book or a story between ninth and 10th and 11th grade. So that's aligned and well planned. We do have assessments and so forth. And the K3 is pretty solid with the Discovery Phonics. But what we've seen, and I, I bring this up now only because we're gonna be talking about curriculum committee and so on, is that with that turnover, you know, pieces of, of the kits have been lost or certain teachers haven't had full training. And so the, the consistency and continuity across schools may not be there because of so much of the turnover that's occurred. And so these are all issues that we need to look at with our curriculum committees. The standards themselves, in the pre-Common Core era, each state had their own standards. So the big publishers would typically do a California edition and a Texas edition. And then everybody else was, you got one of those with a crosswalk. By, we have a couple of texts now that say Common Core edition, which we now are not exactly aligned to the Common Core any longer with our Arizona standards. And so while we're in the just very initial stages of looking at what are the text resources that are out there, most likely what the companies will do is provide a supplement, and they can insert it when they print, of, these are the Arizona standards and where you'll find them in our text. But they will not be textbooks that are specifically designed for Arizona, for the Arizona standards. We don't have the population for that.
That, that would be excellent because if a teacher can go to that supplement and know that on page 547, this AZ Merit is covered, then they can go ahead and teach it in the classroom and ensure it's covered. That's, that's all I was bringing up.
And I think one of the issues that comes up however, is the publisher always says our book is perfectly aligned.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it may or may not be perfectly aligned, and it may, it may have one sentence that touches on that standard and not, not provides the depth or the resources that are necessary. So regardless of where we go in, in this curriculum adoption process, the, the key thing is that, as Mr. Gardner pointed out, the standards are what we're teaching. And we have board-adopted curriculum that, that is what we are committing to our community. These are the resources that we're going to use to teach these standards, you can count on that. If there are supplementals, these are the supplementals that are required. Where we get into trouble right now is people going out and pulling resources because they need something that will address that specific standard, but it may or may not be appropriate for the grade level. Remember, they talked about the, the.
Text complexity.
Yes, and there was the two components on it, which was.
Qualitative and quantitative.
Thank you. Qualitative and quantitative. So there may be a lot of it, but it may not be at a high level, or there may be something that's very dense and, and difficult, but it's only one paragraph. You know, those are the kinds of things that, that at least can be supplemented well for teachers with a textbook adoption. And so those are the, the things we have to weigh. Yeah, that's.
One thing that bothers me is like you just said, some teacher might go out and get something that addresses it. And it worries me when that happens because does that teacher then share it with the other teachers? Is it now become universally being taught or is it only one classroom teaching it?
And, and in fairness, this district has done a really good job of allowing that planning time for teachers by grade level at the elementaries and by content at the secondary to really do that planning. And there's, there's so much to teach and so little time to plan that they only benefit from planning together, and so they've done that very well. I don't know if that helped answer the question or maybe.
It does. I'll have more questions later, believe me.
Other questions?
Thank you. I do.
Yes.
You did that PowerPoint?
Mostly, yeah.
I bet the ADE would love to have that PowerPoint so that they could put about on their website.
They have one that's very similar. A guy that I work with through ADE, he, he's new to the division and he's.
Is it a new PowerPoint? Cause I looked for something that.
I'll forward you the link that he, that I know he's created.
Oh, okay.
His own version.
As long as we got you up there, this is sort of on this line, but a little bit off. Are we making a conscious effort to connect cross disciplines? In better words, what I'm getting at is, in economics.
Yes.
You study elasticity. In algebra, you study slope of the line. Do we tie these together? Are we making a conscious effort to do that?
Yes, positively. I, I can refer to our math department at the high school. They work with the science department. They meet, they talk about, okay, how can the science, this topic in science connect to something we're teaching in math? So there's a cross-disciplinary articulation that's happening.
Yeah, I was just curious because I, I get students all the time and.
Yes.
Can't relate to two things and I just, it always bothers you when that happens.
One of the things is our, our honors math and life course, our financial health work course does align with some of the lessons in economics coming up in that and this stuff. We have worked with chemistry, biology, those mostly in science would be our connections. And I know other departments reach out.
I'm sure social studies and English talk to you too. And I know that happens at the elementary level because you're looking at when they have articulation, they're looking at, okay, with social studies, what can we do to support what we're teaching? Writing, language arts, so it's all connected. So it's really, it's all throughout the day.
And we do as well at middle school. So actually like my social studies department, when they have their common planning time, they have the English standards in front of them. So they're, they're going down and saying, okay, here's what we're doing. Which of our, the ELA standards have we, are we going to be addressing? They're keeping track to make sure that they are addressing as many as they can. And then science and math are doing the same.
Well, do we have departmental assignment sharing? In better words, if, if they write an essay for you in history, are they allowed to use that in an English class for credit and get English grade on their social studies assignment? I'm just asking.
I can't, I don't, I can't think of an example where we have done that, but I could, I could imagine that my teachers would be fine with that.
One of the issues that comes up, and this is where I think that, that conversation's gonna go on a little bit deeper. Mr. Gardner noted that they took out the, the history, social science and technical subjects and the, uh, science references for the informational text standards. And one of the mistakes that's occurred in, I, I was surprised that Arizona had those and know or not, but, um, in the Common Core, they identify the 70/30 on informational reading and writing. And so I'm in California, one of the other big states, but the idea was that, that 70% of your day was spent in classes where you dealt with informational text. And so the English classes would still address the literary text, but all of the informational standards would be addressed in all of those other subjects. The issue that we have is, is partially that, um, our content teachers haven't necessarily been trained to teach reading and writing. And so being responsible for those standards without working in conjunction with our English Language Arts teachers is going to make it much more difficult to ensure that those are taught, if they aren't identified specifically for those content areas. And so without killing our kids, some of that cross assignment will need to get done in order to give them the practice that they need and ensure they also get the appropriate feedback on those skill sets.
What I found when I was teaching economics, is I would give my students an assignment and I'd say, if your English teacher is wanting to grade that, they can use that as an English grade. Well, what happened was they, their writing became actually superior because they weren't just writing for me. They were writing for me, but they were writing on an English standard. And it really worked well and the English teachers didn't mind doing it. We, we shared that, that experience. But I just wanted to mention it. I, I didn't know if we were doing it here or not.
We did have a super, we did the Elks essay for the Americanism, Americanism essay just recently. And actually the social studies teacher and I gave the students time in both of our periods to work on that essay and they received a grade in both classes for it. Is that what you're?
That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you. All right. I think now we've got Mr. Murray to talk about our forensic audit.
Madam President, members of the board, in front of you, you have two documents that were produced by Simon Consulting. Your, your. Your recall back several months ago, we initiated the procurement process of procuring a forensic auditor. Simon Consulting was the firm who responded to that and provided the best quote and services for what we were looking for. So the first sheet that you have is a recap of their proposal of a multi-phase audit, where they would engage in a Phase 1 process with a not-to-exceed of $3,750 for that Phase 1, and then the possibility, based on the outcome of Phase 1, of initiating a Phase 2 as a follow-up if needed. So in that Phase 1, you'll notice their outline of their scope of work, their proposal of their analysis of our cash reconciliation process between the district and the Mojave County Superintendent's Office, as well as an analysis of our reconciliations from previous years with our auditors, Heinfeld Meach. Then also, they were seeking to gain a better understanding through an interview process with not only Heinfeld Meach auditors, but district personnel, and how we've prepared previous years, how we've prepared previous reconciliations between the district and the county. They also sought to better understand the financial transactions and how they're recorded in our current software system, and how that also interfaces with the county. And then they also performed an analysis of payroll and accounts payable registers by looking at transactions and accounts payables for employees, as well as vendors who were on the district vendor list. So that was their scope of work and emphasis for Phase 1. The second page that you have, the two-page that's stapled together, is actually their summary of their conclusions and findings. Again, they broke out their response here, their summary, into a background. Again, it basically summarizes what I talked about, but it also provides some more details of what they did find. They did find during that reconciliation period between, the reconciliations between the district and the county, that there were variances. They were as high at one point as 1.6 million in variances, but they did, through our initiating with them, that we were actually, in the second paragraph, aware of these differences. We brought this to their attention, and they were instrumental in helping us to kind of bridge the gap, if you will, between the district and the county, to help us better understand, and them better understand, the difference in our software systems. Everything that was summarized in their response basically pointed to, at the very end, their After we did discover the variances, and there were some issues within the software system, we went to Sun Guard and actually worked with them. They in turn acknowledged those errors and some of those programming concerns that they had, and they have addressed those. So that brought us back into a more reasonable variance, to the tune of around 93,000 at the time, and that there was some other work that was completed by our office to bring that back down to around 30,000 at the end of last year. What we did note was that there were some duplications within the software system that was actually dealt with and addressed through Sun Guard. They were aware, after us bringing it to their attention, of some of these programming concerns that we noted, and they, like I said, they did address those. So it took some time to bring everything back down to a more manageable dollar amount. They did, like I said, Simon Consulting did check our vendors list, they did do a review of that, they found no areas of concern regarding vendors who appeared to be false, as far as anything fraudulent going on, any activity that may suggest anything internally that was something that shouldn't be happening here at the district level. In their review of the vendors lists and payroll, everything seemed to check out just fine, they couldn't find anything there that was of concern. So overall, their recommendation, and we've already acted upon this last month, was their recommendation, and I'll read that. It says, "Simon recommends that LHUSD consult with the district's auditors, Heinfeld Meach, to ensure the proper accounting and adjustments of that reconciled balance," and which we did. And then they did suggest here, in recommendation 2, that LHUSD may want to consider evaluating the cost-benefit of a change in the financial software utilized by the district. Mojave County Superintendent's Office and also the county treasurer utilize Infinite Visions. It's our understanding that Visions is also the most widely-used software in the state for schools and school districts. By utilizing Visions, LHUSD would likely recognize operational efficiencies and coordinating its accounting with the county superintendent's office and the county treasurer. In addition, system controls exist within Visions that would likely prevent many of the reconciliation challenges the district has corrected in the current Sun Guard system." So that was their main recommendation and takeaway as a result of conducting this audit. And speaking with Simon Consulting at this point, we mentioned that we were proceeding forward with that recommendation and purchasing a new software system. So their recommendation at this point is to hold off on Phase 2 until that system is in place, and then if need be, re-engage with them for a Phase 2 once that transition occurs. So at this point, Phase 1 is their recommendation, which they've just completed. We came in at $1,462.35 in total expenditures for that. Their reasoning behind the $3,750 was that they were thinking they would have to travel here more often. We actually did things via phone and using technology, so we were able to save in that area with people getting in their cars and traveling to and for Phoenix, something that we can do electronically.
So if I understand this correctly, we've got a reconciling issue is really what we've got. How far back does this go? I mean, is this something that's a six-month issue? Is this a year issue, five years?
We found, actually, it was noted in here, we found, our office went back five years, and we did find, that's where we discovered some of these software concerns, where there were liabilities that were still hanging out there impending, that didn't clear, which typically should clear. If there's a liability and then a check is issued, and the check clears, the liability should drop off, but it never did. So, and going back five years, we found some of those inconsistencies, especially where maybe a payroll was initiated, and then for some reason, something happened to that payroll, and it had to be canceled and then regenerated again. The old payroll never completely cleared. It looked like it on the financial side, but in the backend, when we started to dig really deep and actually get into the programming area of the software, that's where the vendor recognized that there were some things there that they needed to take care of on the backend, and as such, they've addressed that.
So this is literally a faulty piece of software that caused these issues?
For the most part, yes. There was an issue with, back in October as well, where, October of last year, so just over a year ago, where there was also some new staff at the county treasurers, or the county superintendent's office as well. There's been some turnover here in recent years as well, in the accounting office. And there was also an area where there was a misstatement of property tax, where the county said that we had a certain amount of property tax, and that they actually sent us a preliminary number, where it wasn't really the accurate number, it was preliminary, so that we can continue with our reconciliation. And with staff turnover at that particular time, that was never reconciled and addressed, but we did end up addressing that in part of this process as well.
So this isn't necessarily an internal staff issue within the district that caused this?
No, well, there was an oversight there with the county treasurer, that we took what the county, or what this county superintendent's office gave us. So we, now there's, in seeing this issue, we've now asked deeper questions to where we can receive everything that we need from the county to double-check that we're completely in line with what the county superintendent's office is receiving from the treasurer's office. So we've, we're tasked with, because of this process, we're tasked with actually trying to make sure that we're reconciling to those who are reconciling with someone else. So we're actually doing double duty.
Okay.
And ensuring that we're getting accurate information.
So does that double duty then go away with the new software package?
It should, because we'll be completely aligned with what the county is doing, and we'll be able to actually drop files within our system, whereas now, they can't. There's really no sharing of information.
And the new software costs us less money?
Yes. Year 2, we should be about a third of what we're paying now. After we get through the transition and the professional development trainings, we should be around a third of what we're...
I've got two questions, and I'm not good with all these nuts and bolts, so I just, just plain old questions. Are you relatively confident that you've got a grip with the county on what occurred, and you know what has to happen to keep it up to date?
Yes. Before there, for example, we, with the current software system, we didn't have many of the reports that we now have access to, because sometimes those questions just weren't asked. So now, now we have, we believe we have every piece that we need to line everything up to do a full reconciliation.
Second question, if we get the new software, or when we get the new software, have you thought about, or have you begun to lay down plans for, trying to think of the right word, for sponging this thing out, for checking it out every three months or whatever, to make sure it's doing what you want it to do?
After the July 1 go-live date, we're, we'll be completely free from our current system, so we'll be running just on the new system alone. Part of this transition period, we will be initiating a timeline and a transition plan, so that will be a topic of discussion. Not only the supports that Tyler will currently, that Tyler will provide in the transition process, but also post-transition process as well.
I know what the word was, shakedown. Again, I was thinking, couldn't get it in my head. Happens when you get older.
So you mentioned the variance was not 93,000, it was down in the 30s?
It was, it ended up being about 30, I don't have the number right, but it was in the 30,000 range, where we actually had to write on 30,000. We were off with the county by about 30,000.
That's not lost money, that's just a clerical error.
Correct, correct. Yeah, cash in the bank is, is cash in the bank, and that's a given, it's just that our, the way we had it reconciled on our piece of paper, buried from what the county had, we knew what the actual balance was, we reconciled the cash, but we couldn't get everything to, we couldn't get the numbers on our page to align with their page accurately based on the reports that we would pull. So now, now we can, we're more confident in the reports that we can pull, and especially as we move over to a new, more efficient system.
That's the only reason I brought up the shakedown, or the new system, is I didn't want us next year or two years from now to all of a sudden find out that there was a software glitch that gave us the same problem again.
And the challenge too, from what I'm hearing, and especially the auditors, there's, in the new system, it's very restrictive. It's very parameter-based, so that you work in a certain area from July 1 to June 30, or whatever that may be, including the encumbrance period, they might stretch it out a couple extra months. However, so with the benefit to that, it allows you to, it prohibits you with posting in the wrong fiscal years. Whereas the current system we have, it's pretty wide open. I mean, we could, you could accidentally post and put a 2 there in the place of a 7 for 2017, you could post back to 2012 if you weren't careful.
So you're not, you're not closing periods in the old system at all?
No, well, you run reports and you can set parameters based on dates, but when you're talking about posting and making entries, you can actually post back to prior years.
Right, but in most modern accounting systems, you hit a period where you're going to close your month, close your quarter, close your year, and as you do that, that sets a look-back period that you can't violate. Even in modern, more open accounting systems, and I'll pick on QuickBooks a little bit for a small business, if you go past 90 days, it actually flags it and says, "Are you sure?" And if this isn't doing that, that's a pretty big danger.
We're not seeing anywhere where we have those warning or flags in place on our current system.
I was just going to say, do you feel like we need a Phase 2, or are they just going to run things once we're on Infinite Visions?
At this point, the consulting group, again, left it completely up to us. They were comfortable in allowing us to make this transition first. They feel that that would solve just about every problem that we have, because of, A, the communication between the county and the district is basically flawless, and B, just having a, just having a system that's more universal, there's much more supports that are in line with other districts in the state.
Like all of them.
Yeah, just about all of them. There are a few, four.
If I may, I would just like to share, when Mr. Murray got here, and we had these unreconciled variances in our, in our balance, I mean, as high as 1.6 million. If we were going to go back and say, what did we not do? Well, we didn't ask the questions that we needed to ask, where these could have been reconciled earlier, because there were obviously glitches in the software for a long time. But I would like to share, he and Kelly Morrison particularly, and all the rest of the business staff, they were, if I may say, like bulldogs going after this. And it was, you know, they're coming in, "Look what we found, you know, we found another 800,000." I mean, it was, you know, it was a charge request to get to that money, that we're down to 30,000, looking back over five years from 1.6 million is huge, and I would like to personally compliment the business staff for that work. It was amazing.
It was amazing. All right. Are we all finished?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Are we going to have an update from Carol Havasu, L-H-C-E-A?
It won't take very much time. But prior to the longest, shortest week ever in education, last week we had American Education Week, where we celebrated, or we honor and show our thanks to our substitutes, our parents, our elected officials, and our educational support staff. And so I just, as the association, I just think it's important that we acknowledge all of the people that make this happen, because without everybody, the integral parts don't work. So just the continuation, and my hope, our hope is that sometime in December, we'll have a chance to personally acknowledge you from the local standpoint, but as the association, for national and Arizona, we thank everybody that worked so hard to make education, help education happen.
That was short, thank you.
Consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to review item 4.1.3 from the consent agenda for separate action under 4.2?
Madam President, if I may, it was my intent to allow the employees affected by the exception to policy to come and speak. I don't see them here. And so it would be my motion that we approve 4.1.1, or I'm sorry, 4.1 as presented. And so it would be my motion that we approve 4.1.1, or I'm sorry, 4.1 as presented.
Any discussion? I'm glad to call for the vote. John Mastin?
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, no old business, so we will move to new business, 6.1, Construction Manager at Risk, the athletic field bond project, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board award the contract for construction manager at risk services for bond-funded athletic field projects to core construction. On September 19th, 2017, the Lake Havasu Unified School District Governing Board approved issuance of a request for qualifications for construction manager at risk related to bond-funded athletic field projects. The request for qualifications was published on the district website, and a legal notice was published in the Kingman Daily Minor and today's newspaper, newspapers. The RFQ notification was also published in the Arizona Bid Exchange and in IMS, a statewide bid service, as well as the local planners. A pre-proposal conference for potential vendors was held on October 18th at the high school with two firms attending. Responses were due to the district on October 26th, two vendors submitted proposals for evaluation, core construction and Rummel construction, there were, these were the same firms that attended the pre-pro, pre-proposal conference. The evaluation team consisted of Larry Prelip, Prelip Construction, John Simpson, the maintenance supervisor of the district, Patty Basar in purchasing, Scott Becker, the Lake Havasu High School principal, and Richard Clutter of EMC2 Architects. After totaling the evaluation sheets, core construction was assigned the most points. It is recommended the Lake Havasu Unified School District Governing Board award the contract for construction manager at risk services to that firm. Payment for these services will come from voter-approved bond funds. This item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing. And on that second page is mentioned in the work session, that is, those are the total points for all evaluators.
Do I have a motion?
I think a motion makes up 6.1 as listed.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Mr. Murray, if we were to take the evaluation presented by Mr. Clutter of EMC2 out of this, what would that do to the scores? Would they remain at the same gap, would they start to equalize?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that, I think they would, they would remain about the same distance, they were, they were pretty consistent across the board between all five evaluators.
My, my concern is, is that we're having a vendor evaluate a vendor, and, and, no offense to anybody who's involved in the process, but when you have a vendor evaluate a vendor, you, you risk gaining the system a little bit in that process. For instance, there's a, there may be more than just a passive familiarity with the company, there, there may be an actual working relationship or a preferential relationship in doing that, and that's my, my concern with this, is I, I think Core is a good organization, I think they're well, well placed to do the job. I was down in the valley over the weekend with, with baseball with my two sons, and was able to go by some of the places that they had listed, so I, so I've seen the work, and the work is good, don't have a problem with that. My concern is that, is that as we go into this, it's more of an appearance issue, and to make sure that we're not evaluating a vendor with another vendor, we breed a familiarity there, and that may not be the best overall outcome.
By, by design of this, we do have to have a general contractor as part of the evaluation committee, as well as an architect, so that's, that's why they were involved in that, in that process. But if, if we were to take, let's say for your example, if we were to take our, our architect out of it, there were actually, from just off the top of my head when I, when I was scoring these, or actually transposing and putting the numbers into the, into the table that you see, there were more, there were other evaluation committee members who were actually more heavily in favor of one over the other, so if we were to take him out of the equation, it, it may even increase the, the point gap.
Okay.
That's a good point, though. I'm glad you said that, because I didn't think about that. All right, any other questions? Call for the vote.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
6.2, discussion?
Madam President, can I excuse myself? I won't have any comments until you get to E and F.
All right, action item 6.2, Discussion Impossible Action on Arizona School Board Association Bylaw Proposals, Mrs. Asay.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, these are bylaw proposals that have been offered by ASBA member school boards, ASBA committees, and the ASB Board of Directors. The ASBA, of whom we are members, must have bylaws approved by two-thirds of the ASBA member boards in order to be effective, and so they are asking our board to weigh in and vote on these bylaw, suggestive bylaw proposals. After discussion, if the board would agree to do so, you can give direction to me to vote in the manner that you have indicated, or we can not vote if you indicate that as well. And so there are proposals A through H, and if you would turn and look through the pages, it's a little bit easier to go through individually. Proposal A is a proposed change which basically states that if there's a director on the executive committee who misses more than one meeting in a calendar year, that that office will be vacated by action of the board. And their rationale is that they sign an acknowledgement that they'll attend full meetings, and if they don't attend, it inhibits the business of the board. So that is the first proposed bylaw change, and the board would decide whether you want to support that or not.
Do we want to do these as we're going through them?
It's probably easier if you want to talk about them as we go through.
I'd support this one.
I don't.
I don't either. I mean, it seems to me that if all, they have the ability to do that, any officer or director who misses one out of four meetings, unless he may be, may have his or her office vacated by action of the board, they have that ability to do that. And what they're gonna do is all of a sudden, we're gonna put this in stone, and it's automatic, maybe you have a real good person there, and they, maybe they're having an appendectomy, and all of a sudden, so they can make that judgment, it's only one. And I, I just hate to see where you put it automatic, where they just don't have the guts to make that decision.
I would have liked to have seen it be, be two, maybe three.
It's only four meetings.
I understand that.
I, I can see, I can see this.
How do you miss two or three meetings if there's only four a year?
But, but, you know, I can see it, they, they have the ability to make the decision, let them make the decision, that's why they're big shots.
Well, I, I guess I come at it from a perspective that, you know, when I, when I belonged to an organization that had four meetings a year, you would have people that would sign up and they would not, they would miss meetings often, and I, I guess if you're making this kind of commitment to sit on the board of directors for such a huge organization, you can miss one meeting, it says any more than one. So in four meetings, you can miss one, but if you miss two, you're out, we don't need to have a meeting about it, you've already signed an agreement, I think that's reasonable, but that's just me.
I knew you were gonna discuss this, but I think it's reasonable also, if you've got four meetings, that's all you've got.
Right.
And you're allowed to miss one.
Right.
I think after you miss the second one, there's a serious issue here.
Because even though they can get rid of somebody, now you're bringing, now you're making it political. Who likes who? Who wants to keep somebody on that missed three meetings because they like them versus you need to be there to do the job? My thought.
Oh, you're, you're two to two now, I don't know.
Where's Kathy?
Kathy knew this was gonna happen.
She could not join us tonight.
Oh, that's what I meant, I thought she was gonna call in.
She was not in a phone area with a phone, but.
All right, well, we look like we're divided down the middle on that one.
So, no vote? Kid Rock singers?
Tom Duranza called me today and asked us if we were voting, he was calling everybody, I don't know. So I know that they want votes on this, so, but if it's tie, it's tie.
The second proposals B and C are actually about the same topic. The first one, which is B, proposes that, well, currently, it's two-thirds of the member boards have to vote in order for something to pass. This one is proposing that when there's a quorum of 60% of the member boards, and three-fourths of those boards vote in the affirmative, it would pass, which is 75% of 60% of the member boards. The second one is proposed that it's a vote of two-thirds of the member boards that are voting, or excuse me, participating member boards. And so if only, you know, three counties vote, and two of them say yes, then it goes. So those are the difference between those two proposals.
I'm no on both of them.
I'm no on them too. And I don't like it when you go from member boards to voting boards, that, that gets sticky.
So these are both no. Proposal D is a technical change, it removes the word Indian from the Native American Indian Caucus.
I have a yes on that.
That is preferred by the members of the caucus.
I have three Native American Indians in my home, and I understand the argument, and while I kinda look at it as wordsmithing to make people happy, I say yes.
You got a yes on that?
Yep.
Yeah, I thought Native Americans were Indians, so it seems to me we're done that.
Wrong hemisphere.
And I'm a Native American. I was born in America, I'm a Native American.
Oh, boy, here we count.
Just saying, wordsmithing.
I'm a no on this one.
Sorry.
No or yes?
Hold on, I'm gonna call the wife.
Did you have a no or yes, I'm sorry?
I had a yes, but I wouldn't, I'm on equivalent, not for, not for dropping one.
I was voting no for a completely different reason. And the first, or the original says a president, the second says president and past president.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, so we're on proposal two.
We're hung up on Native American and Indian.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. I don't have a problem with that.
See, I see this as a political ploy, they want to change, as it sits now, it's the ASBA Native American Indian Caucus, or Hispanic Native American Indian Caucus, and now they want Native American without Indian.
Right, they just want to say Hispanic Native American.
Right, that's a political ploy, in my opinion, that's purely for politics, and I'm tired of everybody changing the name to serve their politics, I mean, I.
So you'd like the Redskins to say?
I like the Redskins, I do.
I look at it a little differently, I skipped one, but I look at it a little differently. I don't see a problem, if a person wants to be called Native American, let's call them a Native American, I mean, I don't, I don't see a problem with changing the designation.
Well, except that it's not just Hispanic, it's the Hispanic and the Native American, this is for the Indians on the reservation, so maybe.
Are they the ones proposing this?
Who's, who's telling, no, it's, I mean, I don't know that it's the Indians on a reservation proposing it, who's saying Native American term is preferred by the members of the H-N-A-I-C? The people proposing this change?
This is from Tempe Elementary School District that proposed this amendment?
I don't know, I don't think that any Indians, people that are, you know, classify themselves as a Native American Indian, are offended to be called a Native American Indian, and I see this as trying to eliminate the Indian out and only have Hispanic, so that this caucus can be served in their political way, that's what I'm thinking.
Can we just pour some Jif Columbus down?
So I'm sorry, I know, John, we have a no and a yes.
I say yes, three yeses in the room.
Yes, okay, so that's a yes. All right, proposal E is proposed by UABN, and what they are looking here is to allow the president and the past president of the Hispanic Native American Indian Caucus to serve, which would then have both a Hispanic and a Native American member voting, because they alternate each year on who's the president for the, for that particular caucus that serves on the executive committee.
I'm a no, E for abusumum.
I'm a no.
No.
I'm a no.
No. Proposal F, and also proposal H are actually procedural in nature, and Contra Elementary is asking that it actually be added to the, to the bylaws, that no action by any delegate or presiding authority shall stifle or terminate debate or discussion in the delegate assembly. They, currently, the, I'm distracted, because I can't say who's sneezing, so bless you, whoever was sneezing. Delegate Assembly currently adopts their rules for procedure, they allow delegates to call for the question, and that motion requires a two-thirds vote of the delegates to pass.
I vote no on this, I think it should stay the way it is, I think that if you have a heated discussion going on, some member ought to be able to call the question. If everybody votes on the question, then yes, you go to a vote on the subject. If they don't vote on the question, then you continue the argument, but otherwise, these arguments can go on for hours.
Okay, but at the same time, if you have an unpopular opinion, your debate can be ended like that, because people don't.
It can't be ended like that unless everybody votes on it.
Well, two-thirds.
And then the point is, I understand what you're saying, but when the discussion gets to the point that you're not gaining anything from it, every board I've ever been on at this rule, you could always call for the question.
Right.
And then the board had to agree to, to vote on the question. I mean, it's not like you just automatically shut somebody up, it has to be voted on.
Well, it's not in there, the way I'm reading it, the motion requires two-thirds vote of the delegates to pass, procedural rules for the delegate assembly currently are not in ASBA bylaws.
And that's my concern with it, and, and I would vote no because of that. When I, when I read that, and the reason why is because now what we're doing is we're adding that, that restriction in. Currently, it appears that it just operates under standard Robert's rules.
And those are adopted at the delegate assembly by the delegates anyway?
I, I just, I just think that we don't want the restrictions in place. Does it, does it potentially stifle free speech? Yes, but then again, if I, if I turn around and I allow this proposal in, it can continue a pointless argument.
That's right. You want to put a filibuster.
Well, it's a... It is a filibuster waiting to happen.
What's the vote right now?
I have two nos. I have two nos, and I'm not sure. I have a yes. I think it's a yes for Mrs. Cohen.
I'm a yes.
I wanna speak for her. A yes for Mrs. Cohen and two nos.
Mine's a no. Not because she's voting yes.
Sure.
No, I'm sorry. I had jumped to G, and I was saying, what are they talking about? I had to go back to F, so... Yeah, I had no mark down on that.
On proposal G, they are proposing to add a new caucus. And this is submitted by Contra Elementary School District. They would like to add a conservative caucus of ASBA and establish that.
Yes.
No.
This one's a yes.
Did you read this?
Yeah, I did.
And then, the last one is from Littleton, which requests that the bylaws state that legislative committees shall hold a basic delegate assembly workshop in advance of the delegate assembly to orienting workers.
In establishing the political agenda, moving items to the floor and expanding the process.
I'm a yes.
I'm a no.
If you don't... For new members that have never been there, if they don't know how this process works, they're just led by the nos from the time they walk in. To me, this is, you know, I didn't have to go to all the ASBA things, but as a new person, it was important for me to go to the first one. You know what I'm saying? So, this is, and this says for... Doesn't it say for...
New or existing.
Oh, it says new or existing. So, I mean, that would be just like everything else that we vote to go to or not to go to. But...
But I don't think any... Well, I could be wrong, but I don't believe at the ASBA conference, they actually train you on delegate assembly.
No.
They don't offer anything on delegate assembly.
I'd say yes.
Which is who's driving the agenda for ASBA, so...
Did you say yes?
I'd say yes.
Mr. Ward? No. So, this one's a split? Okay.
Okay.
What was the vote on that?
That one was two guesses and two no's.
Who was the other no?
Me.
You and John.
I just was interested. I'm copying.
Okay, so, we would need a motion, then, to authorize me to cast the board's votes on the...
I would move that we allow Superintendent Sire to cast votes as we have decided here this evening on item 6.2.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. Okay, 6.3, first presentation, review of policy I, J, and D, B, Use of Technology Resources in Instruction. Wait, this is a science.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the board approve the first presentation of revised policy I, J, and D, B, Use of Technology Resources in Instruction. The Policy Services from ASBA has offered a revision that is based on the passage of SB 1314, which has added a section to the Arizona Revised Statutes relating to the Student Accountability Information System, which in turn has resulted in statutory language being added to policy I, J, and D, B. As we noted in the policy, there are a couple of changes that have been suggested that we brought forward for the second reading. The word DVDs will be left in, and we will be inserting the word media after floppy disks. The major change in this policy is on page 404, where there is a section on parent notification. And this requires that parents will be notified of the policies regarding the use of technology and the Internet while at school. And parents will also be notified of their ability to prohibit the student from the use of technology and the Internet while at school, in which covered information may be shared with any operator pursuant to the statute. This is not applied to software or technology that is used for the daily operation or administration of an LVA, or for Arizona online instructional programs.
I would move that the approved 6.3 is presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have only one problem. It's on the second paragraph, and I can live with it. But I wanted to point out the fact that the last line says, "Safety and security mechanisms shall include..." I really think the verbiage on that should be "will include," but I can live with "shall include."
I actually like "shall." Understanding it, I actually like "shall."
Okay.
You like "shall," I like "will."
Okay.
Well, "will" is like "may." "Shall" is like "shall." "Will" gives you little will. "Shall" means you're gonna do it.
"Shall," get on it. "Will" get into it.
I know we talked about this extensively in the work session, but I didn't write notes. I just...
This was really just those notes that I made on the first page.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. 6.4, approval to purchase transportation and maintenance vehicles. Mr. Murray?
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the purchase of one lawnmower and seven vehicles at a total not to exceed $300,000. Bond funds will be used to make this purchase. Quotes are attached to this agenda action item for review of the governing board. And from the bond funds designated to maintenance vehicles, we have the John Deere lawnmower and six vehicles, two F-250 regular cab pickup trucks, two Ford Transit medium roof vans, and two specialty bed Ford pickup trucks as well, which will have the box tool beds on it to accommodate for the different services in our maintenance department. From the bond funds designated to the transportation side of the bond and transportation vehicles, we have one F-350 diesel vehicle duly truck that will be used in transportation, not only to be used as a tow vehicle, to be able to tow our van trailers and any other type of a trailer, but also to serve in the transportation department when they need to pick up heavier duty parts and those things.
So, this is gonna get rid of the van that we bought in 1903.
Yes. We'll have a rotation. Most of the vehicles that we have, as far as trucks, will still be kept in fleet, maybe slightly refurbished. But there will be several vehicles, a few vehicles that will be replaced, like that 1970's van. That's correct.
Do I have a motion on 6.4?
I make a motion. We pass 6.4.
I'll second it.
I just wanted to point out since David's here that our bond paperwork before we went out for the bond was 302, and this is, what, 300? For this year, for 2017. So, we're right in there.
Two thousand under budget.
Well, the quote was actually around 288. We just, we added not to exceed 300, so we should be a little more under budget.
And I'm not kidding, that van was in service when I graduated high school from here.
We still pass it on the street. I pass it from time to time.
Oh, I see it by high school. I'm like, huh.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask him if he had those numbers.
Any other questions? Call for the vote.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. Okay. Okay, 6.5? 6.5, discussion and possible action to appoint Employee Benefit Trust Board Member. Mrs. Sire.
Yes, thank you. Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board discuss and possibly approve one of the Employee Benefit Trust Board applications that were presented at the last appointment of an EBT member. Per the amended agreement and the restated declaration of the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One Employee Benefit Trust document that was approved by the governing board on November 2, 2017, one trustee of the governing board, of the school district governing board, will serve as an ex officio non-voting capacity. Because that position was changed to a non-voting capacity, it leaves a voting vacancy on the EBT board. On October 1st, excuse me, on August 1 of 2017, the governing board considered four applicants for the vacant position. It is recommended that the remaining three applicant forms be considered to fill the open voting position. The board would have that option, or the board would have the opportunity to open it again as well.
Have we queried all three of those individuals?
Yes. And in reviewing those applications, I did have contact with two of the three, and I know Mrs. Cohen had contact with one of them. Mr. Feliciano was the first applicant that we had, and he is interested in serving. He has 20 years as a professor at Rio Hondo College, retired now, and 20 years as a police officer, and some experience working with nonprofit boards. The second applicant that we received was Richard Myers. And Richard could not be here this evening. I did converse with him. He actually has a bachelor's degree in accounting and had served as the CEO of Social Service Interagency Council for Lake Havasu City for, from 1996 to 2013, when he retired. He has experience on several nonprofit boards, currently is sitting on three boards. And then, the third applicant is Dr. Fadi Attassi, who is a local...
Cardiologist.
Cardiologist, thank you. Local doctor.
Can't read his writing.
No, actually, I can. I was an English teacher. So, and Dr. Attassi has no experience on a nonprofit board, but he does have experience in the medical field and working with insurance benefits. And he also has been involved in civic service through free lectures and free screenings for heart disease within the community. So, those are the three applicants that we have at this time.
I would move that we appoint Dr. Attassi to the Employee Benefit Trust Board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Does he have any idea how long those meetings go? And the reason I'm asking that is he's a professional. He's a doctor. And let's face it, you know, there could be some real conflicts there as far as his time. And those meetings, I wouldn't use the word marathon, but they're rather extended, and you're looking at, I think, the most recent one, we got out in two and a half hours. So, if the new people running it can cut down on that, I think it's more realistic. But I'm just thinking that as far as a doctor's concerned, running his own business, and that all of a sudden, he's gonna have to be up here, and maybe he can make those adjustments and all that. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
When I spoke to Dr. Attassi before the last vote...
When? When in August?
The one in August. Thank you. I explained to him that they were long meetings, but that I was hopeful that they were going to be shortened. It was gonna be more streamlined. Things were going to be more standardized, so to speak. And so, when I reached out to him to see if he was still interested in serving, I did indicate when the next meeting was, the new trust document had been done, and that in a perfect world, it's gonna be four times a year. You know? It hasn't been that. I understand that. But I don't anticipate that it's gonna continue the way it has been. So, I think he's fully aware. I told him how long they were. So, I think as long as he's got the dates in advance, it's not gonna be a problem for him. I mean, it's his practice, so he can make his schedule, and he's got another partner in there to...
I second it. I seconded John's motion, simply because of the fact that I think we need to be realistic about the fact that Dr. Attassi brings a wealth of knowledge in an area which the other members will not have.
Right.
It'll give us a much broader board. Just wanted to mention.
What's the term of life for Dr. Attassi if he's voted in?
It would be Mr. Rooney's term, which, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me right now.
I didn't.
I think you have three years left on your term. Is that right?
Two.
Two.
Two?
Seems like a lifetime. I know the feeling.
It could be two.
Yeah.
I think it is 2020, I believe. I'd just like to say, as a member of the EBT, I got on the board in June of '16, and I was at a school board meeting when they announced it, and Mary was the secretary that they... And I said, "Well, how long do these meetings normally last?" And they started 11:30, and she said, "We're normally out by 3:30 or 4:00." And I said, "Are you insane?" And I've never been on a board that takes that much time. Now, that being said, the past 17 or so months, there's been a lot going on within the board and within the school district. And one of the comments I made early on, the first two meetings I went to, was when someone takes a 19-page PowerPoint and reads it, that's crazy. And we, as the board, Pat and I and the other board members, had talked about this, said, and this, we're getting reports from the different providers, and there's no reason we can't have this information like you have this information. Could you imagine going through all these booklets while you're sitting here? So, if the information is... And it's better, and the information is getting to us in a more timely manner. We have a new consultant. Very impressed so far with how they're handling it. And I think our meetings are gonna be much more streamlined. The things, the content, when we need to discuss something, that's the time we spend. But just going through a dog and pony is crazy. And I think that's coming to a end. So, I think, and I know two to three applicants, and they all seem certainly qualified, but I, from Dr. Attassi's standpoint, yeah, I think, plus, like Nicole mentioned, four times a year is a little bit more palatable. So, I think it'll be okay. Just makes sense.
Any other input, questions?
I just had a question on going forward for terms that are going to expire this year, June 30th. What is the board's expectation on when you want applicants in, because this seat wasn't really open for new applicants? So, is there a procedure or timeline that you guys follow for?
I think April. So, we do a May, or the present.
I have a note on that for my, on suggestions for future agenda items. Can we talk about that?
There's no other questions, I'll call for the vote.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. 6.6, discussion and possible action to establish board advisory committees and appoint ... and appoint two board members to the subcommittees. This is Asaya.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the board, after discussion, approve, and you've already actually established the curriculum and discipline advisory committee, but actually establishing the members, defining the purpose of each committee, and appointing two board members to each of these subcommittees. There, there's been a lot of work done in this area, we did speak about curriculum earlier this evening. We have identified curriculum and discipline as areas of focus for 1718. And with the establishment of these advisory committees, I'll get it out. With the establishment of these advisory committees, it allows us to have these open meeting discussions community-wide around discipline and curriculum. The area of focuses, that area of focus that was identified for curriculum was based on the comprehensive needs assessment process. And the major area in this was the age of our materials in our classrooms, particularly in language arts and mathematics, as those are the areas that we currently have new standards in. We're not looking as much at social studies and science because the state board is getting ready to adopt new standards in those areas, so it would make sense to address those once these new standards are adopted. And so one of the purposes of that committee may be to identify our greatest areas of need and how we might budget resources and what our priorities are in those materials. Then in our discussion last year, based on the review of our student handbooks and looking at the suspension data, the secondary area of focus for the governing board was discipline. We do need to begin looking at, what does our policy say? And then how do we want to take recommendations on revising our discipline policy, as well as any revisions that would come forward in the handbook for the 1819 school year? And because those handbooks come forward in April and May, that committee needs to be established so that we can get working on that. In preparing for this discussion with the board, I did look at our district policies. We have policies in instructional goals and objectives, in curriculum development, and in curriculum adoption that are specific to the area of curriculum. We can also look at, in thinking about our purpose, is looking at these, and do they in fact, in fact reflect the priorities of the board, the needs of the district, and the interests of the community? So that would be one thought about the purpose. We also have references in our curriculum to Arizona Revised Statutes. So there are some requirements by statute. In curriculum development in particular, one of the areas that does require is the involvement of students, parents, teachers, and administrators in the development of curriculum. And so in thinking about a committee, that would need to be assigned with that representation. And I have some suggestions for that. In the area of discipline, our policies include JIC, which is student conduct, and JK, which is student discipline, and there are several pieces underneath that. But Arizona Revised Statute is very specific as it relates to that, and so there are some details in statute. One of the things in the statute in relation to discipline is that it must be done in consultation with teachers and parents of the school district. So that's one of the parameters that are listed in statute for that group.
Okay.
Turn that over for discussion.
So we're, first, before we discuss anything, so we're going to have two board members on each committee. And then are we going to establish what the rest of the committee is going to look like today?
Yes, that would be, if you could, that would be helpful, because if we could get a committee, invite people and get something going in December, just as an initial meeting, so that we can begin that work in January and February, that would be excellent.
Okay. Is, is there, do you have any interest on being on either committee, Pat?
Well, I was going to say, I think Kathy wanted to be on the...
Well, I have a note, I know she...
Okay, she had indicated to be, I, I'd like to be on that, just like...
As would I.
Okay. So I think we're going to have to vote, because I definitely want to be on the curriculum committee. And so we've got three members that want to be on the curriculum committee.
Why, we assign three?
It then becomes a board meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, they are public meetings.
I'll step back.
Will you feel inclined?
I'll take snipes from the outside.
Yeah, they're still public.
They're still public meetings, and members may be attend, but they're not...
Well, I know Kathy really wants to be on it, so I'll just step back and take snipes. I like doing that anyway.
We call that voices from the edge.
So when it comes to the school district, what were your thoughts on...
I, which, who do I start with?
Curriculum.
Okay, starting with curriculum. I just made some notes. I do believe that we need to have representative from administration at the high school and middle school, and probably two elementary administrators. I also think that we need to have an equal number of students on that committee. Students are addressed in the...
An equal number?
Yes, like, one high school, one middle school, two elementary...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Could you say students? Excuse me, do you say students?
Students, yes.
Or do you say students' parents?
No, students is what I said.
You, you folks have to set this up where you're comfortable, but, you know, I don't think students who haven't gone through the curriculum are qualified to say what the curriculum should be. I just, I really question that. Their parents, I could see. But the students, both from maturity level and experience level, aren't going to lend a whole lot to a committee.
It's only a suggestion, the board's going to, to give direction on that, so...
That's not in statute?
No, 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 that's my suggestion.
Okay.
And it says teachers and parents for, actually for curriculum, let me look at that again. I want to make sure I'm saying that correctly. For the curriculum, it says curriculum development, this is, this is actually not in statute, this is in our policy. Students, parents, teachers, and administrators, it goes to say students in our policy. There is ARS references here, I haven't looked in statute to see if that is referenced in statute.
You know, I, I think that there's one part of that, especially when you get to English Language Arts, that I think students can be valuable. We want students to read. And there is a certain grouping of modern reading material that is probably an exceptionally good grouping of modern reading material that we may not know about as adults.
But could I suggest, then, that we consider the fact that if we're going to put students on this, that they be more mature students, that students who've gone through the system and have seen the faults in it, so that they have something to lend to?
And I would, I would suggest, at the middle and high school, they certainly have been through an education. We would want students who have been through our, our district. Our elementary students, many of our sixth grade, I've met several of them from the student council recently, are pretty mature and could talk about their experience in learning to read, for example, and how that worked or didn't work for them. So I think there would be some value of having them on that committee. Those were the only areas where I was looking at a number. Otherwise, I was suggesting that we may have, look at teachers, and look at subject matter expertise, as well as grade level expertise, as appropriate. We would want to have some community members out there. And then parents, my suggestion would be to take parents off of our site base council. And that, my suggestion from that is because those parents have come forward, been involved in our CNA process at each of the school sites as part of the site base council. And so they have some, already some background in this process. Mr. Gardner as the curriculum director, and I think probably LHCEA would be another one to include.
As far as parents go, I'd also like to see outreach to some of the parents that don't get involved. You know, make a conscious effort.
And I have a note, the process for other volunteers. So if you want to, you know, set the, the parameters and the size of the committee, then certainly, or if you have individuals that you want to name right now, that would be as...
Well, I, I have two individuals that are in the audience that I would like to have on the committee, Dick Hawkins and Diane Kloszmyer. My, I have concerns, though, about the students, and I know we have a student sitting here. It seems like a lot of things are student-driven, and it's not that they shouldn't have an input, maybe from the past, but I don't want to be arguing with high schoolers about a history text. I don't want to have that argument with high school students. And I don't, so I don't know if maybe high schoolers could sit on, or could engage in the middle school, and middle school could engage in the elementary school. But when we're talking about curriculum, I don't know that what you're talking about applies, because encouraging kids to read, there should be a point where you can read, where it doesn't have to be part of an approved curriculum. Am I missing something?
I think I look at the reading list as part of the curriculum, and maybe I'm mistaken in my thought process there. But, but I think that there are parts of, of a well-developed reading list that should appeal to what the adults want, and then there should be a part of that that appealed to something the kids would like. I can, I can remember reading things in my high school career that I thought I would never read because they became interesting to me, because I had more of a freedom to read than what I see in a reading list now. If I didn't get to Orwell, I never, probably would have gotten Douglas Adams. And, and so I look at that, and I go, okay, how do I take that and apply it to a modern kid who looks at Douglas Adams and goes, "Who? I want to read that guy." But I've got all this stuff here that's kind of the fantasy, more of the Harry Potter vein of things, more advanced books, but I watch my boys read through books now, and just demolish books. So I, I think that there's some valuable input along those lines, and I think we can glean from students in, in developing reading lists, especially when we get to the middle school and high school. I don't, I don't think that they're going to help us with math as much as we think. But I think that there's a, there's a role to fulfill, and I don't think that it's, it's, it's a broad and deep one, but I think there's, there's contribution to be made.
Was it appropriate to have the students assigned to a subcommittee, that they're called before the committee when you have a subject you're, you're facing that's student-applicable?
I, I think that it can happen in a number of ways. This subcommittee, this is a subcommittee of the board, basically.
Yeah.
And so, and this committee will only make recommendations to the board. They're not making any decisions whatsoever.
Right.
And so I think that perhaps the value is just considering all perspectives. The other, you know, as far as content, I think some of that is related to the structure of the committee and the focus of the committee. And so, you know, in a structured environment, I don't necessarily see that a student would be able to contribute positively in that respect.
I just don't see you dragging students through meeting after meeting after meeting, where a large percentage of what you're discussing isn't really relevant to them, or they don't have input. And that's the only reason I asked, if it would be appropriate to assign the students to a subcommittee to be called upon when you address appropriate subjects.
And so maybe it's, the, the first piece would be to step back and say, what's the purpose of the committee?
Well, I, and I think that's an organizational thing in the committee itself. I think that's what the first meeting is for, is where, where are we going, what are we doing? What are our parameters? If we want student input, what does that look like, and how does that come to the plate?
I think to a degree, but because it's the board's committee, you need to have a sense of, what is it that you want that committee to accomplish? And so if it's to review our policies and then make recommendations on policy changes, or review the, the data that we have from the CNA process and make a recommendation on where do we look first at textbook revision, this might be an area where students would have some input on the quality of textbooks, the availability, et cetera. You know, I don't know, but so what, so what really is the purpose of that curriculum committee?
I have my own ideas of what the purpose of, I'm the one who really wanted a curriculum committee, and it's because it's our, the curriculum is changing so often. That's not what our community wants, and I think it creates a lot of havoc within our schools, that there's no consistency. If we're teaching, when we're talking about the standards, if we're teaching a more consistent curriculum, a more classical curriculum that doesn't change, that creates continuity, right? Year after year after year, no matter what they do with the standards or the test, because you can meet it with anything, am I correct? And, and then that can be improved year after year, and, you know, great wild things that you can do with Shakespeare, whatever it is that, you know, you're, you're doing this classic, and of course, I'm, I'm thinking history and I'm thinking literature, I'm not thinking technical stuff. But that was my thought process. And then that just eliminates a lot of unknown, whether we have new teachers coming in or what, because over time, it would just, like all these other great elite schools that have been doing the same thing over and over again for 100 years, why do we have to keep changing everything up in the core subjects, you know? So that was my thought process, and I know Diane had her...
I just wondered, too, how far you're going to go as far as curriculum? Are you going to review the books and see how they will benefit the students in whatever field it is? Of course, with pace, we are naturally focused on history and the teaching there all, based on the founding fathers' point of view. And so that, the primary foundation of our country. Is that, how broad are you going to make this curriculum study? Are you going to review books as well, and maybe institute new books to benefit them? I provided a number of books, provided from the National Constitutional Studies. You, I understand some other people are bringing books from Hillsdale that might be beneficial in the study of history. Other people on the committee may want to bring books on science, or books on English. The McGuffey readers kind of combined a number of things. It taught a lesson, and used to teach spelling, it taught reading, and actually, they learned how to use some of the information that was contained in those stories for the benefit of themselves and their family.
You're not really old enough to view some McGuffey, are you?
I, I think that it's going to be as broad or narrow as people are willing to get into it. I mean, we, we're starting with the baseline of what we have as far as textbook, and they're all old.
Right.
They're all old.
Now, we have critical need, and so my personal feeling is we need to start with where we have critical need, and then go from there, but that's certainly...
The committee will have to iron all this out. I mean, we're not going to iron it out till night.
Well, and can't some things serve two purposes, like you were talking about before, and, oh, gosh, I forget, Kelly was talking before. Can't some books serve more than one purpose?
They can.
For curricu-- I mean, if you're adopting textbooks, can't we, and they don't have to necessarily be from the big publishers.
That is correct.
So...
And I think, you know, the committee's going to have to decide all this, what they're going to aim at. But I think for textbooks, and he mentioned the fact, reading lists are critical issues the committee's got to address. Because without standardized textbooks and standardized reading lists, you don't have a standardized curriculum.
Well, I know that there's a need because of the critical needs assessment, but I also know that there's been a need and a burning in my mind, and in a lot of the community's mind, about, you know, the history, and that's all the way down to kindergarten, so...
I was questioning, Arizona will have new social studies standards next year that are going to look super, super different than they look... are going to look super, super different than they look now. And science. And so I don't know what science looks like, but I know they're very, very different. So I don't know if it's, not that it's not worth the time, but there's going to be drastic changes to what the state of Arizona is looking at K-12, and I think it hasn't gotten public feedback yet. There's so many steps that have to take. And it's a lot to work on for a change, and I think the change will be really, really positive, and the change is going to give more local control. But I don't know if we wait until 18, 19 during the year of review and then implementation for history and science.
I think it's something you take a running start at. I think, I think that we've got math and English on the table now. And so when we start talking about history and we start talking about science, I think we've got some very critical needs, looking at, looking at our data from testing in the English and math proficiencies. And I think that that's where you start in those core critical areas, where you have the most glaring needs with curriculum, and you work your way out. I see a curriculum committee a lot differently than I see a discipline committee as well, as far as scope and time and how long that committee stands. I see discipline forming and breaking once a year. I see, for a series of meetings, but once in that year's period, I see curriculum being an ongoing issue, especially in a state that looks like it's wrapping into an every-two-year turn and burn on its curriculum.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of my point. That's kind of why I think it's important to look at it.
But I, but I think that, I think that if you start talking about history, because you'll have some preliminaries to the standards.
Yes.
About the middle of next year is where you really want to start getting into history and science, because you'll have that, start of that formation, you can kind of start seeing where that bellwether is going. That's probably the right time to attack that. Prior to that, when we get into December of this year, in the first part of 2018, I can see us going a little deeper into math and English, English, language arts points of it. And I would, I would say that, from my perspective, no, I'm not going to be on that committee, I would say that I would be looking at, what are we getting into as far as resource material and reading list and textbook, and do we want to put parameters on what we're pointing offline and so on, so that we can start to standardize some of these things? And I think that our greatest glaring need for some of that is at the elementary schools. When we start talking about, do we teach the same thing at Nautilus as we do at Smoke Tree? I don't think we, I think we do, but I think we don't. I think that our resourcing is different, our pacing is different, there are moving pieces to this that come off the tracks. And that's, to me, is a bigger concern at this point, getting everybody on the same page, and once you get everybody on the same page, then you can start to make some of these natural moves into, this is what I want in a reading list, and this is what I want, you know, for a math text, and we can start to move our way forward and work our way up that food chain into high school, where it's probably going to get a little bit better coordination because of the way prep works at high school.
I think another coordination thing that the committee will have to look at sooner or later is, are we evaluating across to all of these schools on an equal basis? In better words, I don't know right now. Do you have a universal benchmark for grade three all the way across to all your elementary schools? Because your benchmarks have to be universal, or you really don't know whether you're teaching the same materials.
Yes, we do.
I remember when I was here last year, or maybe it was a year and a half ago, when the new textbooks came out for the high school.
Maybe that was four years ago.
Was that three years ago?
Four years ago.
Four? My goodness. Okay, well, then it's been in practice for four years, and we have standing room only in here, because the parents were very concerned about the quality of textbooks. I think it matters to the parents on certain subjects especially, like history. They want the true history taught to the kids. This is why in our engaging in PACE, we try to teach based on the originalist point of view of the founding fathers. And I think, and based on what their desire was, the fact that they were willing to risk everything for this great country of ours, what did they mean in the Constitution? Was it more liberal or was it really giving us the guidelines and the ability to amend it if needed? And I think a lot of our youth are somewhat confused as to how the Constitution's applied. And if we, if we go back to the founding fathers and the Federalist thinkers, we probably would know what the foundation of our country originally was, and it appears that they had a pretty good program for what they thought would be best for our nation. And it was my hope that we would get some of the PACE instruction through, of the school district. The books I brought start with first and second grade, and it goes on up. It doesn't start with real in-depth things on the Constitution, it starts with pictures and things to make them patriotic, loving of God and country. Believe it or not, our founders believed in God, and they sent prayers in school. They sent Bibles to every school. They even held services in the White House. But somehow, a letter that was written by one of the founding fathers to a church group has been misinterpreted and been quoted as being part of the Constitution when it isn't even in the Constitution. This is why we want to reach the kids. What does the Constitution really mean based on the founding father's point of view? Not mine, not his, not yours. What did it, what, when they set up our country, what was the foundation supposed to be? And right now, we, we will probably be doubling the number of kids in the after-school program. We are lucky, we have wonderful teachers in our school district, you know, that are willing to teach after-school classes to present history. And I go to people, and I was raising funds recently for a fundraiser, and some of the people say, why isn't it being taught in the school? Why are you having to do it after school? Well, I talked to Diana Sarah about it, and she said she wasn't sure as to how much time we could devote to some of this. But you know what? Our classes go for an hour to an hour and a half, one day a week, for 11 weeks. Surely, we would have that amount of time to teach the kids true history based on the founding father's point of view within two semesters.
I think most of us agree with the essence of what you're saying. I think the problem tonight is Diana and Nicole are going to have to establish all of that after we set up the structure. Our question tonight is, what's the structure of the committee going to be? And then after we get the structure set, they'll need to address with you your concerns. You see what I'm saying? But tonight, we can't solve that problem.
Well, I didn't mean to solve it, but what I'm trying to do is get an idea of how we're going to gauge our curriculum as far as the parameters of this curriculum committee, and are we going to consider the textbooks? What is the material that's in there? What are we teaching our children? I look at some other states, and I see our children believing in freedom for themselves, and if they don't like a guest speaker, they don't want that person to have freedom. Well, they have the same Constitution that they're under, and they should in some way be taught what the Constitution really states, and so that if they are granted a certain freedom to speak, they should allow other people the right to speak without necessarily getting so angry that they're going to destroy school property. We are blessed in Hattaway. We have wonderful teachers here, and we have a wonderful administration. I want to keep it that way. I'd hate to see the type of things that are going on in some parts of our country. I hate to see people feeling they do not need to honor our flag. Our men are dying for that flag. The flag represents them. Our kids in PACE understand what that flag stands for, what every part of it stands for, the stripes, the stars, the colors. They understand the true feeling of patriotism, and I don't mean just patriotism, love of country for country's sake, but love of God and country. This is what they're taught. And when they look at the flag now, they don't look at a piece of cloth, they look at something that stands for their country. I don't mean to be on a soapbox. Thank you.
I think the focus right now is on deciding who and whatever are going to be on the committee. Once the committees are set up and they start doing this, then it would be an appropriate time for those issues to come up.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
And we've gotten bogged down on this, and, you know, this is almost becoming like an EBT meeting.
I'm just going to say, I understand that you think that it's bogged down, but I'm going to say that there's a lot of people who've waited a long time for tonight, so I have respect for those people.
Nicole, I do.
I understand what you're saying.
But I, what I'm saying is that right now, the discussion is formulating these committees.
I understand.
Okay? And then all of these ideas, and I appreciate you coming here, so I don't mean to, I hope I haven't been heard or tried to cut you off.
I'm not sure I'm clear on the purpose either, so, just so we're clear. I'm not sure I'm clear on the purpose, because all I'm hearing is CNA, and we need to do this, and we need to do that, and maybe history down the line. Here's the problem, folks, our kids don't know a lot, and we are listening to our kids a lot. We're always having to make decisions, and I hate it that we have a student sitting here, because, you know, I'm not coming down on the students. This isn't about the students individually, but it's almost as if we have empowered our students to think that they know everything. And they're now going to tell me, and I've had this happen, they're going to tell me what's right. They have never had a family, they've never paid taxes, well, maybe a little bit if they've got a part-time job or whatever, but my, my point is, is that we are involving these kids in every level, and there's almost an arrogance there. And, and I have a voicemail right now on my phone that is, that is getting me to speak about this right now. So I'm not really sure that I'm clear what this is either. I don't know if it's being used because of the CNA, but I've been wanting to do this since I got on board. So, and now I feel like it's, well, we'll just, you know, history, social studies isn't until next year. Guess what? There is no history standards, it's all social studies. So my point is, I would like to talk about what we were going to do, and maybe this isn't the time or the place, but I thought this is what we were discussing, the structure, the purpose, what we were doing. So I'm on, I, I understand what you're saying.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I understand what you're saying, and, and the reason that I, and I know that you were, you're saying everything I already know, but I let you say that because you've worked so hard for this district, and I didn't want to cut you off, so.
I agree with all three of you. That's unusual. But what I'm saying is that tonight's the night to decide, how many people are going to be on the committee?
Right.
And as far as PACE goes, the committee, after it meets, will have to decide where that fits within the curriculum. You see what I'm saying? Tonight, we can't resolve that. But when the committee forms, and you present the same thing you presented us tonight, they can decide how this fits within our curriculum. You see what I'm saying?
I guess, and I, that's fine, but I'm still not clear, because if this needs to be a district CNA, we need to improve our status for the state so we get funding, that's different than what I have in mind. So.
What, what came out of the CNA from all of the groups that were brought together by each of the schools is that our materials are too old and they're not being consistently used. And so we looked at those because of the math and language arts assessments. I mean, that was part of what that was all about.
Right.
But it certainly identified that need, that we need to focus on our curriculum. And so the purpose is to focus on the curriculum, but there, you know, there need to be perhaps some parameters to that. And so are we looking at, at studying certain content areas? Do we want to have a general discussion around?
I think so.
I, I don't know. That's why the board needs to say, this is the purpose of this committee. And some of that is necessary, because if you're going to bring teachers onto it, so do you choose expertise in content area or, you know, so how do you identify the people? It's kind of like a chicken and egg. You can name the committee members, but until you know what the purpose of the committee is, then it's hard to identify necessarily all of those committee members.
Well, for me, I think it makes sense to have Brad on the committee. Of course, he's the curriculum director. Obviously, I think somebody from the high school, the middle school, you said two elementary schools, I think that's fantastic. Content experts in elementary, middle, high school for English, language, art, and math, I don't have a problem with that, but what we're going to run into is we're going to have a whole thing of district people and three, five, or 10 people from the public. And I think what's critical, from my perspective, is the philosophical conversation that needs to take place, the worldview conversation about what we're teaching in our classrooms. That's what's most important to me. So now, now you guys can decide what you want, because I said what I want.
I think we need the curriculum committee to focus on the continuity of curriculum with the standards. The texts and any reading lists, any supplemental material.
We got a lot of it.
Yeah, and we probably have too much.
A lot of it's disturbing, too.
But we probably have too much. The point, what I'm trying to make is, we need to ensure that what's being used in the classroom aligns with the curriculum, and that isn't always true. You know, you have a reading list, but if the reading list doesn't fit the needs of the curriculum, then it shouldn't be on the reading list. But that's up to the curriculum committee, but I think those are things they need to address. And just so you'll know, because it'll come up sooner or later, as far as texts go, I'd much rather buy text for every classroom out here than put another baseball peeling here. I'm just telling you. I'm a believer that without texts across the board that are consistent, you can't educate.
So what I sort of have heard. That's okay. A couple of facts, in that we understand that we need to teach the standards, and that the curriculum is what we use to teach those standards. We don't have any real continuity in that right now. And we don't necessarily have accountability for teaching certain curriculum resource, for using certain curriculum resources to teach those standards. And so this committee may begin with, what is our philosophy as a beginning point? And then in looking at helping our kids to master, and we talk about those standards in reading and writing and informational texts, et cetera, what would be the actual materials that we would utilize to do that? What would be the philosophy of those materials? Would it be a more classical-based curriculum? And the informational text is a part of the reading standards. That could address the history of social science as well, so that will come up. The, I think the question that comes up with the history of social science perhaps is, how do we assign grade level appropriate content? And then that's really where that comes into, is at what point are they going to be, you know, picking these pieces? But our philosophy could be that there are certain themes that are going to run through every grade level regardless of whether it's in the standards or not, because that's not a requirement. So that's kind of what I heard, is the purpose of the committee. And then at some point, narrowing and prioritizing, these are the first things that we'll look at to bring for adoption perhaps to the board. But I do think that our philosophy could easily be addressed in just looking at what is our policy, and bringing a recommendation back to the board on what is our policy? What are our instructional goals and objectives?
Wasn't the action item talking about whether or not you can establish these boards?
No.
And then you're going to have, it says possible action, and then you're going to have two board members and administration and teachers and stuff?
The, the item was to define the purpose of each committee and appoint two board members as well as other committee members. as well as other committee members.
I could sign off on like a few.
Does that summarize the purpose? Am I hearing it right?
I think so. I think I followed you.
Okay. Well, I have my own super plan.
Okay.
And so far, I have down that we're going to have Mrs. Cox and Mrs. Cohen, Mr. Hawkins and Mrs. Klostermeyer on the committee, that we're looking at, at least an administrative representative from each of the grade spans, and then parents, certainly, our director, and then maybe a process for other volunteers. And I don't know how you wanna do that.
Maybe a recommendation from the principals.
And I know there was somebody that said, and Mr. Ward and Mrs. Cohen, both of you have mentioned those people who are not traditionally involved, finding a way to give them an opportunity to get involved.
And your teachers may be able to recommend parents that they know that aren't normally involved, but are still concerned parents. I'm just saying, it's awfully easy to wind up with your PTA members doing everything. And what we wanna do is, we wanna draw out parents other than those that are constantly involved, so that you can see what's going on underneath the surface.
How many teachers did you say?
It didn't say how many teachers, certainly.
I would hope that all.
I have, and I know I basically said by subject expertise or grade level expertise as appropriate to the committee, so I...
What size are you looking at?
It's getting huge.
Oh?
It's getting huge, so...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I view it like an accordion.
Yeah.
Talking about math, you don't need English teachers there. If you're talking about English, you don't need the math teachers there.
So generally, there's gonna need to be a discussion. The other thing is, when it comes down to, and we also have a policy for an adoption process, once we get down to that point, so, you know, the bigger committee is not going to do every step, but they're the very first step.
So, in that first step, we'll have reviewing, we'll be reviewing everything we currently have listed?
Yes. Yeah. That's why we've been gathering those book lists and publishing dates, and looking at the CNA. I can certainly put together a more detailed list of suggestions, if you would like that.
I think that would be good.
From the discipline committee. From earlier conversations, again, looking at our student conduct policy, and looking at all of our handbooks, the conversation really needs to come back to philosophy again. And so, I think that's the first step for that committee, is to look at what is our philosophy, what is our purpose in that. Again, I think we need to have administrative representation from each of the levels. I would suggest, and we talked early on about this, having Dr. Pearl as a member, as he was one of the people who early came and talked to our board about our discipline practices, and conducted his own research. From that point on, I think what the statute says, which I had read, was, teachers and parents of the school district are what name the statute on that particular one. And then, maybe somebody like Chief Doyle, maybe others. I'm kind of open on that one, I don't know where you guys wanna go with that.
So is the purpose going to be to look at getting rid of zero tolerance policies?
I think that's the philosophy conversation. What is our philosophy? Do we still believe in zero tolerance? Do we believe that there's, discipline is contextual? What is it that we, you know, will have in our general statement? There are some things in statute that are required, but that's not, you know...
I think if he's willing, the student resource officer should be on that committee also. I would prefer an SRO as opposed to Chief Doyle. And it doesn't matter, in my mind, it can be the community of the middle school or the high school on the SRO. I'm not sure, I like Dr. Pearl, but I have a concern, because I think he's got a philosophical bent to a lot of what he looks at in some of his research.
I would concur, but I think that, personally, I would just advise that we don't exclude people who might have a different opinion or philosophy, because it would have that...
I don't necessarily want to exclude anybody from it, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we wouldn't be better served in looking at our community as a whole for representation, and if Dr. Pearl wishes to be a part of that group as opposed to a specialized invitation.
I know he expressed an interest early on, so, that's fine. Any other thoughts?
Do you have any drug specialists or drug and alcohol specialists out there that we can tap? It'd be good to have one of them on that committee.
I think, I think we have community slash parental involvement capped at about five.
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 Another thought that I had jotted down, I wasn't reading at my notes, we may wanna consider having our hearing officer, because that person has heard all the different cases that have come through.
I think that's a pretty good list of people on a thought process. What do you think, Pat?
Sounds good.
Send out some recommendations?
I'd also try on that committee, and just whatever the committee says, but I would look at some of our coaches, the people that deal with the kids outside the classroom, because they get feedback that you're not gonna get in the average classroom.
I'm sorry, I wanna go back to, for Mr. Rasm, when you were saying five from non-school people, community, did you include parents in that also?
Yes.
I don't know what the population of, like, what is it, licensed political social workers, our community population, but if we had somebody from the community, a private LCSW, that's what it is, that would probably be good, somebody not attached to our district already that knew, you know...
When I say coaches, I mean anybody who isn't in the actual classroom environment. It could be custodians, it could be the lunch lady, people that deal with the students on a regular basis outside the classroom.
So do we have any actual action on this one? Or is it just an instruction for the superintendent to send out invitations?
I don't think there's...
I think the only action would be to appoint your board members to the committees.
Okay.
And then to direct the superintendent to follow up with the suggestions from the board.
Then I would move that we appoint Board Member Rooney and myself, President Cohen, and Board Member Cox to the committees. And that we direct Superintendent DeSider to make the appropriate connections to start to staff those committees.
Sure.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. Okay, 6.7, Mr. Murray?
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the expenditure of bond funds on work related to non-building painting at Lake Abysoue High School, an amount not to exceed $50,000. The Arizona School Facilities Board recently approved a weatherization project to be done at the high school totaling $1.1 million. That was also, that was just for the high school itself, but then there's a gym project that was over $400,000, so just for your records, your information. So the total, the total is actually closer to $1.7 million, when you factor in all the fees and architects and whatnot. So this $50,000 was recommended, so that the painting, the handrails, site walls, metal fencing, et cetera, can be done as part of this project. The School Facilities Board awarded this project to G-Con from Phoenix, Arizona, and then you can refer to the attached bid form on the back of this document. And this has been reviewed by purchasing.
Madam President, I make the motion that we approve 6.7 as presented.
Sure.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I just wanna know if my bathroom is gonna get painted.
It's inside a building.
It's an interior bathroom. He noticed that there's some paint chipping on the wall there.
By the way, you gotta know the fact that the state will not paint the handrails, but they'll paint the building. Kind of like when they build schools, and they'll build a classroom, but not a hallway.
He noticed, I never forget, I never forget.
And just for your information as well, they have already started this project. If you go by the high school, you'll notice that there's actually, they're actually priming and sealing the walls now with a white paint, so we're not painting it white, that's just the first phase, just so people don't get that confused.
We agreed on hot pink, right?
Correct, hot pink and purple, I think it was. And tomorrow, we will be finalizing, or actually submitting the actual paint numbers and codes to the contractors, so they can mass order all the paint. It'll happen tomorrow morning. You can call for the vote.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. 6.8, approval of vouchers, Mr. Murray?
Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended that the board approve vouchers for October 2017, along with the student activity funds for both K-8 and 9 through 12, and auxiliary funds for September 2017. I am passing around, this is, we have this conversation, or just that can make you aware of, this is the proposal that came out of the work session last week regarding the current layout of the voucher report that you see within the bond packet, or within the board packet. So this is in draft form, but in formulating this and setting it up, we originally discussed having three months, so like October, September, October, so you can see several months next to each other. But I proposed putting current month and previous month, as well as a current year total, and then a prior year total, as you can see. So, the current year total does actually include the month that we're speaking of, so the current year total does reflect October's amount that you see in that column, so that... I'm open, that's why you see draft across the center of it, I'm open to suggestions, but as you can see, we're limited as to space and columns that we can put on one page.
Not if you put 6.5.
I can do that, if that's a recommendation, I could do that as well. And then I'll pass out the magnifying glasses.
Right. Plus five meters.
I appreciate that. I think the more we look at this, and the more we work with this, the better we'll understand it.
The prior year total, you notice that the payroll amount at the top's not there, as I just didn't, I ran out of time today to finish it all, so that's why it's still in a draft form. I know you weren't expecting this for today, but at least I wanted to get it in front of you, so you can let me know what direction you'd like to take from there, so I can finalize that before December's meeting.
Can I inject the fact that I appreciate that you put headings on that page?
Yes, I can carry that over.
Do I already have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I know that we approved 6.8 as presented.
Seconded.
Any questions?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. Any call for the public? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Information, this is DeSider, superintendent of the board.
Thank you. I do wanna point out in the donations, that we once again had an anonymous $10,000 donation to have a Sipai Elementary School, and our Relics and Rods has donated $3,000 to be distributed among the elementary schools. Our total this month is $15,900, which is almost $16,000 in donations. Of course, that $10,000 one did send it over the edge. I also would like to point out that Calvary Baptist has made donations in monetary and in physical products. They continue to support us, you know, after the day of service, et cetera, even while in many ways they're a competitor. I would also like to point out the informational reports. We do have some information in the curriculum report about the number of teachers who are attending National Board Institutes. It's amazing, we've had 23 teachers attend this year. Mr. Baker already reported on the standards, there's some information there. And then we do have a report on our progress in our technology implementation that is there, that was provided by Mr. Baker, who is our new supervisor of technology. And then some information on special education.
Best part about the end of that technology report is the last line. All other projects are on or under budget at this time.
Do any of the board members have anything?
I'd just like to put something in the back of our mind. We get these donation reports all the time, and I'd sort of like to see us try to sit down and think of a way we can repay the community, you know, thank them, I don't care, have a special meat to eat at the high school, something to tell the community, hey, we really appreciate the support we've gotten.
I think we sent out cards to...
Maybe the band hold a concert free of charge, just for the community downtown someplace, or, you know, just something to say, we really appreciate everything the community does for us.
I would like to point out that Curtis Townsend, who was a graduate of our high school, is the first graduate from college in his family, and he's now an engineer with Raytheon, and he's been donating to the school district, and I think now Raytheon matches his donation, and he's been doing it for years, and so, when people, we've really had an impact on him, and the appreciation he shows us all the time, I'd like to point that out.
I will mention that when we were doing the banner for the parade, we couldn't name all of our donors on that banner, and so it's now hanging by the high school, thanking our community and the donors, so, I appreciate that suggestion.
Okay, no calls to the public?
No.
Any questions from...
Gosh, no.
Teacher, teacher?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Under the suggestions for future agenda items, I have two items listed. One of those was to suggest to the board that we agendize, or have a discussion about agendizing a spot on the board agenda, a regular spot for the ex officia board member to provide a report or update to the board on the EBT. My suspicion is that, once those meetings get going, that you all will not be attending them all the time, and that would be appropriate for our board member to report to the board. to provide a report or update to the board on the EBT. My suspicion is that once those meetings get going, that, that you all will not be attending them all the time, and that would be appropriate for our board member to report to the board, as kind of a general, what's, what's been happening with the EBT. And then the second item is that, and Mrs. Thompson brought it up earlier, we did extend some dates of board members on the EBT, and what I would like to propose is that in January, we revisit that, so that we are sure who's serving which terms. Even though we may want to get an application process out in April, I think that we should have a discussion about that prior to April. And so that would be my suggestion, is to agendize that for January. What are our current terms? So those were the two main items that I had on the agenda.
Okay. Is our, is our ex officio going to keep, officio going to keep attending EBT meetings now that he's off the hook?
No, no, I'll, because like she said, I'll give, you guys want me to give reports to you, so...
I think we still can provide input on behalf of the board.
Right. Yeah, now that Al has said that it looks like you'll be short of beans, I'll be more happy to go.
Do I have a motion?
Are, are you into call, call to the public now, or...
Well, I just, I did a couple. I did, before.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I probably wasn't listening well enough.
Do you have a sheet?
Basically, what I would like to mention was, we have asked Nicole Cohen and Diana Sar and Richard Hawkins to come to talk at a meeting. PACE, it's being hosted by PACE. We want to know something about the future education for the students in our district. And Diana Sar has other obligations. She said she wasn't going to be able to make it, but fortunately, we've been honored to have Nicole Cohen will be willing to come to that meeting on December the 2nd, Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00. And also, Mr. Hawkins will come, and he will, she will, Nicole Cohen will cover some of the things, talking about curriculum in general, not that it's locked in stone, okay? And Mr. Hawkins will present various worldviews. Why? Because it was brought up as to a worldview in one of the slides that were shown when Mrs. Cohen had presented her philosophy and her ideas for the future of our school district. We've gone around selling tickets, et cetera. We have, we have a lot of people are interested in what is the school going to be doing in the future? It's going to be held at the library on December 2nd. That's a Saturday between 1:00 and 3:00. It's open to the public, all parents, school board members, educators, residents are invited to attend. And they will give their presentation. We will allow for questions, but they will be on a card, so that the questions are brief. We're not trying, we're trying to show that the school district has been doing a good job. We're very proud of our teachers. We're very proud of our school district. But what PACE has drive is to try to get our curriculum as part of the things considered in the new curriculum studies that will be coming forward. People are asking us about Common Core. Parents are asking us why they can't help their kids with math. Parents, we want to know what are the basic foundation things that the district's going to be doing? Will it cover history based on the founding fathers? Or will it cover history based on, for example, America's flaws, that I've heard so many kids talk about? Will we be, how will our format be in general? Will the child's education be provided on interest-driven education to stimulate a child's love for learning? If so, what's the cost going to be? Will it narrow the overall educational opportunities and capabilities? How about technological studies? Will it be focusing on human achievement and prosperity or robotic dependency? Diana Sar did a presentation about robots and how that's going to be used as a big part of our workforce. Well, are we still going to encourage human achievement and prosperity? And how do we reach the students on this level? So that they don't feel, well, the robots are going to do everything for us, now we don't even have to study or work for it. Anyway, we will have a really interesting meeting at the library. I know it's a broad concept, I know nothing's locked in stone, but we're hoping that we can answer some of the people's questions. Will we have religion or atheism as the social foundation for our schools anymore? We, we've seen in other parts of the country where there is some moral decay. There is expectations, for example, to have everything free. Is it free? Is freedom really free? Our kids learn that it requires responsibility, the ones who attend PACE. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity to have Nicole Cohen, and we would have loved to have had Diana Sar there as well, and Mr. Hawkins. Thank you so much. I hope you're able to come.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of, second.
Ellen Warren?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.